Good evening. It is seven o'clock on Thursday, April thirteenth. This is our regular scheduled meeting of Talmage City Council. So we will call the meeting to order and we will start with the first order of business will be our opening prayer and our pledge of allegiance. Prayer will be led by Pastor James Case and then the pledge by the mayor. So would you please stand?
To each and every one of you, God's blessings. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, it is a new day in Talmage, Ohio, and we rejoice in knowing that you are here in this room, helping us with decisions and things that just need to be done through your will. We ask you to bless our meeting, bless our city, bless our mayor and its leadership through the governments throughout the country and throughout the world. We pray for peace. Be with us now as our meeting continues in your name. For Jesus' sake, we pray. Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Pastor Case. Item three, Mrs. Burton, roll call.
Becky Allman.
Mrs. Allman could not be here this evening.
Jonathan Bolus.
Here.
Adam Bosak.
Here.
Mary Gutman.
Here.
Carol Kilway.
Here.
Dennis Lowry.
Here.
Craig Cisak.
Here.
We have six in attendance this evening. Item four, correcting and adopting the previous meeting minutes of March ninth. Kind of a motion, please.
Mr. Lowry.
Mrs. Kilway.
I move to adopt the March ninth, 2023 council meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cisak. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Burton?
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bosak.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Cisak.
Yes.
Meeting minutes are adopted six to zero. Item five, financial reports, fire and EMS fund transfer in the amount of $175,000. Street maintenance and repair fund transfer in the amount of $450,000 to council on 4/4/23. Appropriation report, fund report, and revenue report for the period ending 3/31/23 to council on 4/6/23. March financial reports to council on 4/6/23. Talmage Recreation Center profit and loss report for the period ending 3/31/23 to council on 4/6/23. Income tax comparisons for the period ending 3/31/23 to council on 4/6/23. Consolidated investment portfolio for the period ending 3/31/23 to council on 4/6/23. Income tax by source report for the month of March to council on 4/6/23. Revenue comparisons for major funds for the period ending 3/31/23 to council on 4/6/23. Could I have a motion, please, to accept the financial reports as presented?
So moved.
Or provided to us?
Second.
Mr. Cisak, second by Mrs. Kilway. Any discussions on the financial reports? Mrs. Kilway, excuse me, Mrs. Burton, please call the roll.
Adam Bosak.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Cisak.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes. Financial reports are accepted. Item six, public hearings. We have one this evening in planning and zoning and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kilway.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry. We do have a public hearing today. It's ordinance 2023-34. It is 7:04 and I'm going to open the public hearing. This is to amending the zoning map by rezoning the property of applicant Tan Mihem for GT Brazilian Jitjitsu, Pura LLC owner located at 51 Southeast Avenue, parcel 6000098, consisting of approximately 0.3884 acres from industrial I-1 to general commercial district C-3 and approving the existing general development plan. At this time, does anyone have, from the community, we're going to open it up to the community, does anyone have anything that they would like to discuss either for this ordinance? Is there anyone that has anything to discuss against this ordinance? Second time. Is there anyone in the community that has anything to discuss for this ordinance? Is there anyone out here that needs, that has anything to discuss against the ordinance? And third and final time, is there anything, is there anyone that has anything to discuss either for or against this ordinance? Okay, so hearing no discussion. I'm going to close the, the public hearing portion of this and it is 7:06 PM. And I will open it up to the planning and zoning committee. Is there any discussion on this ordinance as it writes, as it sits right now?
Madam Chair, after your committee?
Anyone, anyone from council at this time? No? Yes, Mr. Klein?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To put this, this is the old Pol town. I think most of us realize where that's located. This is zone currently I-1, which clearly that whole region right there should be a C-3. This is a, they're purchasing the building. It's a great operation at that location, planning zoning approved it, as you can see, five to zero. And the city's administration is definitely behind the recommendation to make that zoning change.
Thank you very much, yes. And I would have to agree 100% with that as well. You know, as probably the longest living Talmage person on council right now here. I remember when it was all industrial there. And I remember when, you know, there were machine shops and everything in that area and that is totally not what's in there now. It's all commercial. This is a no-brainer in my, in my opinion. So does anyone else from council have anything?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just have one question about the actual overlay for the parking lot. Currently, you can turn directly into, I guess, the side lot from Erie. Will that still remain the same or will there be an actual curb?
The parking will stay the same as it is now, but they know in part of the planning zoning if they, they have room in the back to extend their parking, to actually add parking, but that must go in front of a planning zoning to be able to do that for site plan review.
Okay. And then I don't recall if Pol town had a dumpster or not. But is that part of that plan? I'm assuming it's part of that plan approval process?
Behind the building is a dumpster location.
Okay, all right. And that's all screened off? Everything's all right? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from council?
I move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2023-34. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Cisak.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bosak.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2023-34 has been approved by a vote of six to zero. So congratulations, you have your approval. And at this time, I will close the planning and zoning committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Kilway.
Thank you.
Item seven is community input and this evening we are pleased to have our new state representative in our new redrawn House District 35. Representative Steve Demetrow is here to speak with us this evening. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me. Great to be here tonight. Thanks to, for what you do as local leaders here in Talmage. And, you know, as Dennis said, my name's Steve Demetrow, the new state representative for District 35. So I live in Geogga County and then also represent parts of Portage and Summit Counties as well. So it's been a lot of fun getting all around northeast Ohio the last year on the campaign trail and then now serving in my first time as an elected official down in the State House. So I tried to make my way to as many township trustee meetings, village council meetings, city council meetings as I could. Obviously, I didn't get here to Talmage, you know, during the campaign, but I guess I'm fulfilling the promise now after, after the election. And I look forward to engaging with you and, you know, the residents of Talmage in whatever capacity you need me. You know, I was talking to some of you before the meeting started and it's been interesting to see how I've engaged with, with local municipalities the past few months. And usually it's when agencies down in Columbus aren't doing their job properly or, you know, government, government at the state level is intersecting with your lives more than it needs to be. So please lean on me as a resource to, you know, help get things done, you know, with whatever agency or in the State House as you need. And I gave you all my card, so look forward to staying in touch and getting more active here in Talmage. And again, thanks for what you do. And I've learned too, how as you go more local in government, I think the more services you deliver, but also the, I think the job's a lot harder too. Because you, you see your constituents every day at the gas station or the, you know, the grocery store. So I'm very appreciative of our local leaders all, all over the district and I'm honored to be here tonight. And I'm also here to, to honor a longtime public servant for Talmage, Chief Mike Passarelli. And I'd also like to acknowledge his wife Patricia, who, you know, I, as a army veteran myself, I know that the wives often get overlooked, but they're holding it down at home when we're, when we're doing the dirty work. And so I appreciate, you know, the chief's long service, nearly 50 years to the community. And I was joking with him, he's world famous. My aide was calling me this morning telling me when he was home last weekend and he saw the chief on a commercial. And his, his parent, his, he was staying with his parents in Medina County. So he's, he must be a pretty big deal out here. So I'm honored to, to be here today to, to give a commendation from the State House. So let me, and I, I guess I might have to come back because I was talking to Pastor Case here and he just retired too. So I kind of came empty-handed. So I apologize, Pastor. You know, I don't know, the chief's just, he's getting written up in the paper. He's, he's on TV now, so. But I have an excuse to come back for, to another meeting if you'll have me. So I'm just going to read this because it was pretty, pretty well-written and I think it sums up his, his legacy of service. So on behalf of the members of the Ohio House of Representatives, we are pleased to extend special recognition to Mike Passarelli on the occasion of your retirement from the Talmage Fire Department. Throughout more than 47 years of distinguished service as a member of the Talmage Fire Department, you have demonstrated an unwavering dedication to performing your duties and fulfilling your responsibilities with the utmost efficiency and competence. Commencing your tenure in 1975, you have served as a paramedic, a fire inspector, and an emergency medical services instructor. And you advanced through such ranks as battalion chief and deputy chief before being promoted to chief seven years ago. Over the decades, you have given unwillingly of your time, energy and abilities far beyond what was required or expected. And you are certainly deserving of high praise. At a time when many people are content to take a passive role in life, you have chosen a vocation in which you have often risked your own safety to ensure the well-being of your fellow citizens and the enthusiasm and devotion to duty that you have shown in all your endeavors, that you, you have shown in all of your endeavors have earned you the respect and gratitude of your peers and of the community you have so capably served. As you retire, you have the satisfaction of knowing that you have established a record of professional achievement that is worthy of emulation and your leadership and expertise will be sorely missed. Thus, it is with great pleasure that we congratulate you on your retirement and wish you the best in the years to come. And it's signed by myself and the Speaker of the House, Speaker Jason Stevens. So thanks for all your service, your true servant leader, Mike, and it's been great to, to meet you tonight. I look forward to getting to know both of you better. And let's give them a round of applause if that's all right. Thanks for having me, Mr. Mayor, and the rats of the, the city council. And I look forward to being of service to you all and look forward to listening to a great meeting. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this is also the time in the meeting where anybody from the community in the audience that would like to address council on any item that is not on our agenda can do so at this time. Is there anyone that would like to do that this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eight, agenda additions. This evening, we have a liquor application from the Crichton Family Ventures LLC, which was formerly Delaney's. And if I understand this correctly, it is just a reapplication of the license that they already had. Mrs. Rayber.
That is my understanding as well.
So do we need to do this like, like a public hearing or do we just need to?
No, you just, you just, you can take a roll call vote and just ask if anybody wants to. Basically, what your decision is, is whether you want us to request that, that the state holds a public hearing because we need to vet something out further in this particular matter. I, I do not believe that that would be an appropriate course of action, but it's up to you to decide that.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or would you just, are we ready to have Mrs. Burton call the roll?
I would just say we don't need a public hearing.
I'll second.
Good.
I just, I had one, one question. This application or this information, there's one typo up there in the top and I don't know if that's on us or if the applicant. Where it says patio.
This, this is all paperwork that goes through the state and the applicant. It has nothing to do with us. We just get a copy of it.
Okay.
That's new. I pay you.
Pay you. Is that a new thing? Okay.
It's a new, it's an up-and-coming term.
They pay you to sit there. I like it.
Okay, Mrs. Burton. So, so we are voting whether or not, not having a hearing. So if you do not want a hearing, we will vote yes.
Correct.
Carol Kilway.
Yes.
Dennis Lowry.
Yes.
Craig Cisak.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bosak.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to item nine and this will be the reports of our administrative officers and we'll start with the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got quite a bit of stuff to talk to you about tonight. So let me start off with very pleased and the city's very lucky through the leadership of Chief Williams. And I know you have resolution 2306 tonight recognizing Captain Doug Bohan and Dave Chacolta and the Talmage Police Department for their efforts on bringing to a closure a case that is so old. So very happy of Ron's leadership and those men who worked very hard to help to bring that to a closure. So Ron, Chief Williams, thank you for that. Let's talk a little bit about economic development. In the, some construction going on in the annex portion, Dermomed out there off of Crystal Parkway and Progress Boulevard back in there is doing very well on their construction. Apollo Heating's roof are, they're under, well under construction out there. Planning zoning approved last week, Dayton Freight, who's also out in the annex portion. A parking lot expansion for future development and future addition to their building, which that's nice to see Dayton Freight expanding out there. McDonald's on the circle was approved through planning zoning to build a brand-new McDonald's. It's going to be in a new location. They will close the, their current building for a period of time to be able to build the new building. But the building's going to be flipped over one spot closer towards the circle. And so they were approved both through the Appearance Commission and through planning zoning. This past month, through business visits, Industrial Tube and Steel is doing very well. Store Tech is looking for an expansion. That's a five-year goal, break ground in the annex portion. RW Martin also out in the, or the Jet in the annex portion. They're doing very well. Master Precision did receive a, a grant of $50,000 for some of their project that they want to do out there. So very happy with them. SD Myers is reporting the best quarter they've ever had. So we're happy for them there locally. Also in the Jet, Chase Bank broke ground this, not too long ago. And that is the vacant lot that was beside the Myers Gas Station. That's Chase Bank. And Alties, they're a little behind, but they are still plugging away. And they say this spring, well, spring is going to be here and gone before you know it. Well, today it's like summer, so very nice, but, so that they're doing well out there. The Joint Dispatch Center up at the old Weaver Workshop, corner of North Avenue and Hall Road. I went through there this past, a couple days ago. It is phenomenal. That thing is transforming into carpets in some, most of the areas. A lot of the cabinet, the flooring's in, the ceiling drop tiles, all but the pads are, it's ready to go. So we're on target to have that turned over to the cog in, sometime in July with then training dispatchers moving in by the end of the, the year. So I, hopefully by December, we'll be dispatching from that location. The cell tower on North Monroe behind the football stadium, as you can see, that tower's up in the air. Just because it's up in the air, everybody said, wouldn't my cellphone going to get better? It's, it's still a lot of work. They're starting to do the trench work, the fiber optic from the street back in. And by August, hopefully that will be up and operating. And the first vendor that will be operation, I'm told, is Verizon. This Saturday at nine o'clock at the Talmage Truck Center is the expo and I'm sure most of the council folks will show up there. We will be there from nine o'clock to three o'clock, passing out different things at our city booth out front. All are welcome to join us. Very happy with my staff. Been very active with the public, very transparent with the public about electrical aggregation. As you can see, Betty Lynn Fisher has posted a lot about it, First Energy, what's going on with that. Talmage aggregation rate is 4.96 cents per kilowatt and we're good through May of 2025. And so our rates will stay that even though you're hearing from the PUCO and from everyone that it's going to go up to 11 cents per kilowatt. We were, I'm happy that I locked it in for a longer period of time. I usually don't do that, but I did. So it worked. Also with gas aggregation, keep in mind, we're at $3.73 per MCF and that in November of 2024. So we're good with gas also. So things are going extremely well in the city and very happy.
Thank you. Any questions?
One, one other item. I know Dr. Cooper is not here tonight. He's in training. He did send council a memo last Saturday referencing the, the personnel study and he gave you the dates. That's going along pretty well. Jill is working a lot on that. So we should have a meeting coming up here within the next couple of weeks. And then the police chief position was posted April 1st and will be open until May 1st. And that progress, that process has been underway. Getting a lot of folks inquiring about it. Some applications are already being turned in. So pretty happy about that.
Any questions?
Take the chief Williams leave, but it's retirement time.
Any questions for the mayor? Ms. Kilway?
Yes, just real quick, in case any of our residents ask us, because our rates are so great with the, the aggregation for both electrical and gas, if they want to opt-in, what's the process?
So if, if you're on electric and you're currently with someone else, you have to call your supplier that you're with today.
Okay.
Because there's an opt-out penalty for a lot of those folks. And if the opt-out penalty could be as high as $100.
Yeah.
Summer, no opt-out, but you have to know what it is. You have to know what your contract is.
Okay.
And when you talk about 4.9, 4 cents per kilowatt versus 11 cents, so you're not talking, that's not a lot of money each month. It's, it sounds big because it's a big jump, but it's probably a $5 to $10 a month increase. So divide that by your $100 opt-out fee. Is it worth opting out?
Right. Right. So first they, first they'll have to make, see what their opt-out is, if they're in a contract or if they're, if they're not in a contract, which I don't think anyone would not be in a contract.
You could join the city.
Then you can just, and so would they call the city here?
We're walking through, some folks say, I don't know how to do it. So Tish in our department, she's actually calling the, our aggregate, putting our customer on hold, then getting them on the phone, then linking those two together and walking them through it. So they're really doing a phenomenal job down in the service department. They're helping also with all that.
Okay.
Mr. Lowry, I did not talk about the fire station.
Thank you.
And how could I not do that?
I wasn't sure where, where I was.
Yeah, I know. I told you I had a lot to talk about. Let me, if you can see that photo up there, let me zoom in a little bit if I can. That's the fire station today at 11:47 and I will just walk you through a timeline.
They were still working, Mayor, at 6:40 this evening.
Yeah. I'm disappointed this main wall is still standing, but I know, and I'll tell you why it's still standing, but, because they were not supposed to get the trucks to offload the material, the trash out. But three trucks said they would be there and so they stopped with the wall demolition and started loading the trucks. So tomorrow morning, there's one of the big trucks and that is at 3:49. Watch him knock it down. I wasn't there. No, I don't think it's. So that's the, tomorrow that site will be pretty much cleaned up and they will be just about completed with the demo portion. And then our contractor for the site work will be there to, probably starting Monday to complete the, the final site work and move them out. Station's working out really well. The guys are in there. It's a lot of building to clean.
Anything for the mayor?
Yes. So with that demolition, do they currently have safety fencing up around the perimeter of that now?
They do not.
Okay. Is that something they were required to do or?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And then you had mentioned Dayton Freight in the annexation or jet portion. My question would be for Mogadore Road. They use, I don't know the street, but they go down Mogadore Road and they turn left to get back into their facility. Is it Talmage, Kent, or Brimfield that would be responsible for any widening of the road there? Putting in a turn signal? Who would be the?
Brimfield and Portage County.
Brimfield, Portage County.
Portage County engineers.
Okay. So has there been any talk about potentially doing something like that?
Not at that, not on Mogadore Road. They, they did some widening of the intersection coming out of the development. But there's not been talk at this point. They did the expressway portion. I'm sure you've been down that way.
Yes.
When the expressway comes off.
Yes.
That portion. And it really has helped out that whole areas.
Yeah, I, I do agree the widening has helped in that area. The only thing I had mentioned, area I had noticed, when you go down that road, you can get stuck behind a truck for quite some time, sometimes, because they'll have one coming out and one's trying to go in. So that particular road that they turned down, who would be, that would still be Brimfield and, and Portage County then?
Who are you talking about?
Where they turn off.
To go into the?
To go into that annex.
Talmage.
That would be Talmage. So have we looked at potentially widening that road?
No, it's, it's pretty wide right now. I mean, it, it makes the turn radiuses. Crystal Parkway, Portage Bul, Portage Boulevard, they meet the requirements. There's not been a problem there. Are you, when you're traveling, are you going through the industrial park that, on your travels to get in and out? I mean, it is industrial park.
Right. I just, I'm, I'm thinking long-term future here of.
We just upgraded the intersection.
Increase of trucking and things like that, if that's.
At Howe Road and Crystal Park, Crystal Parkway. We just upgraded that whole intersection through Portage County engineers.
Okay. All right. But there's nothing else on the?
Not right now.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Boles?
Yeah, just regarding the PD chief process of recruiting and going through those applications. Has the, the public or technical panels progressed on like selecting individuals to serve on those panels?
Working on that as we speak.
Okay, so it's not finalized at this point? Thank you.
I have a question. In regards to the same police chief hiring process, why 30 days? Is that something that's pretty standard across the industry for the application?
Important position to the city. We wanted it longer to have it out there. A lot of times we go two weeks, but the way we're advertising and the national search that is out there.
30 days seems short because I'm sure it's a pretty robust packet.
It's, we're getting a lot of inquiries from across Ohio.
What's the, what's the likelihood that it's extended beyond the 30 days? I mean, is there a threshold you guys are looking for as far as applicants or anything?
He's here until August.
Yeah. Well, you know, sometimes you want, like, you know, you're looking for five qualified applicants to move forward or three. Is there a number? No? Thanks.
10, 20? Be nice.
Anything else for the mayor? Thank you, mayor. Let's move on to Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr.
Good evening. First off, 89 East Tow Road. The equipment and furniture auction is underway. It started yesterday. That's the DD auction. Started April 12th. It'll run till the 19th. There is a walkthrough on April 17th between the hours of 10 and 12. And then the, the auction material can be picked up till the April 24th. So that's underway. Zoning, you can see 48 total permits were issued, 24 were the zoning certificates. And that's fencing and decks and that stuff. Code violations are 42, 15 of which are property disrepair with the weather breaking. That number should go up just because everybody can view around and look and see what's going on. Six total burials, five are full, one was the cremane. And you can see the grave sites there. We've just received a first rendition of the concept plan for the cremanes park. And that's off of the columbarium where we're putting cremanes in the ground. It's a concept plan because we're running out of real estate over there. So it's, it's an opportunity to bury, add more burial spots if we do this cremanes park. So we have two locations and I'll be happy to share that with you at the next meeting, hopefully. Parks and Rec, you can see the membership at the rec was 7,468. That was a 9% increase from last year. The visitor at the rec was a 15% increase from last year. Summer camp registration for residents was April 11th. And that's like Black Friday. That's best way to probably sum it up for everybody. Long waits, we're discussing alternatives to improve that. The issue though is people get shut out. And those that got shut out last year, I believe, crammed that line early and didn't logjam it, but it was more excessive than normal. And the only thing I can think of is COVID's over. People are getting back into the swing of things and a lot of places closed from COVID. And those that got locked out last year jumped in there pretty quick. So we're, we're looking at how to improve that. Hopefully we have a better way to register, but I'll get back to you on that. Community center schedule to reopen tomorrow. We have a wedding there. So it's, it's turning out pretty good. We have a walk, a final walkthrough to do. It'll probably take another month to wrap things up. I'll be coming back with a change order. We talked about the bead board and the ceiling. As we're walking through wrapping it up, one thing I didn't look at, the counters in the restrooms. The countertops in the restroom where the sinks are probably need to be updated and replaced. I never looked up past that point because that wasn't underwater. So now that we've walked through, that probably needs redone. Mcapul membership as of April 4th was at the 1,452. Remember, we cap at 2,000 this year. The water slides were inspected. Repairs will, are hoping to be completed before the season opening. We're hiring lifeguards and counselors. We're still looking for 12 qualified lifeguards and then 10 counselors for, for the camps there. And believe it or not, males, boys are needed. We have a short number of boy staff, males in the, in the counselor section. So if you know anybody, we're out there trying to get it, but having struggled a little bit this year than we normally have been. Quick update, the tennis courts and pickleball court resurfacing at the Lions Park. Keep in mind, that's part of the ARPA funds, a huge thing. You can see the cracking there. It's excessive cracking all throughout every court there. So that's been one of the main reasons. The, the new net post anchors have been installed. And that's the pictures to the left, the pickleball and the tennis. And then that on the right isn't snow, that's fabric that's laid down before they pave. And what the hope of that is, is it's got a tensile strength to it. And the hope is, once they pave that, that the cracks don't migrate up through the new asphalt. So that, that's, that's the layer that stops that cracking from migrating up through. Is it foolproof? No, but it's better than milling that all down and trying to repave it. Because that asphalt, we did some core samples, is 11 inches thick. So those cracks are pretty deep. So this should remedy it for a little while anyways. And keep your fingers crossed, they're coming in to pave it tomorrow. And we can all thank mother nature because that has, it's unbelievable that they're paving tomorrow. The Howe Road Phase Two park layout, this is it. It's laying up here. I'll be happy to go over it with anybody with a closer look, but that's the dog park, the new shelter, the new restroom and parking lot expansion. So that's the phase two. The street department, as you can see there, snow and ice control, they actually had some, 262 hours last month. They removed 6, 6.6 tons in street sweeping, did 300 linear feet of ditching, did three culverts. They replaced two culverts, swept the sidewalks along West Avenue. We do that annually. We try to do it right before Circle Fest, but the best time in the year is to do it right there as we're coming off a second shift. That way we're not slowing, messing up the traffic pattern. And we completed the second round of streetlight inventory. Monthly training was confined spaces and EPA water to move it. And then I'm coming in here early, believe it or not. Probably gonna have about a $31,000 change order in sidewalks already. Usually I come in after the fact. I know Molly loves that. But I'm coming in early because just like everywhere else, once you start sending out the letters, you start marking the sidewalks, all of a sudden the neighbors come out. They want to know why theirs isn't getting done or they point out someone else's that needs done. So we've picked up some other, some other sidewalks. So we're already at about 31,000. Next slide. The utility department, zero water breaks, two so far for the year, one sewer backup. That's the first sewer backup that we had in our main in three years. And it was right here at the circle between, and that's a picture of it right there. That's the pipe that got replaced. It was between Northwest and, and North Avenue, right there by, in front of Key Bank. And it was the strangest thing, the, the top part of the pipe was missing. So I don't know if it deteriorated, if it broke down and it got sucked down with the rest of the stuff. But the whole top of the pipe was gone. So never seen that before. It looked like somebody cut it, which we know, that's, that's almost 10 feet deep. So we know, but he's, nobody's cutting it. And then we spent 72 hours televising all sanitary sewers on the streets we were going to pave. That way we're not paving streets that are gonna get ripped up with sanitary sewers in the future. So that's all good. And lastly, we passed an EPA, Ohio EPA audit that was back in January. The minimum control measures is what we're responsible for, for the phase two permitting. And we have six minimal control measures. This was just the illicit discharge and detection and elimination. So every time there's an oil spill, remember the tanker that got hit on the circle? We have to show that we documented and that was cleaned up. So we have about five a year. It's not bad. We do pretty good. Also the dry weather screening. So the, the Summit County Health Department comes around and does about 20 of our outfalls during the dry weather. And you're not supposed to, dry weather, you shouldn't see any water flowing through it. So if there's water, then that starts the whole list of discharge. You gotta backtrack to find out where the water's coming from, does the water got any bacteria in it? It's quite extensive. So we passed that satisfactory manner that they gave us is actually a perfect score. They don't give out anything, but that's a really good score. They only gave recommendations, they didn't give any orders, and they didn't mandate to do us anything. So on that, we did well. Good job.
Great job. Anything for Mr. Rohr? Ms. Kilway?
Yes, just real quick. First of all, congratulations on that satisfactory award from the EPA. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Good job on that. You had mentioned the streetlights. You went, they went through and audited the streetlights?
Twice.
Twice now. So how soon does Ohio Edison come out and repair those after?
The same guys that come out and repair them are the same guys cleaning up from the wind damage from back to back weekends. So we probably won't see them for a while. Ohio got hit pretty hard.
Yeah.
And they're just being honest. So do you have a street light that still needs?
There's, there's one in my neighborhood. It has a red, it has a pink tag on it. So that's why I was just wondering if it was.
If you could shoot me the address, I'll put it on the front burner.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. I'll send that out to you. And then the last thing too with the summer camp, if you can hire more counselors, are you gonna open up more slots possibly?
Maybe.
Okay.
If we could get the first 10 hired, that'd be great.
Okay. Work on that first. All right, thank you. Thank you for everything you do too. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Boles?
Thank you. I just want to thank Mr. Rohr and the rest of the street department for the work they did on Washburn Road with the signage, replacing the signage, painting, everything. The signs look great up and down Washburn. Can't say it changed the speeds, but it definitely, it looks nice. They were well needed and those guys did a great job. So thank you.
Pass it on to, thank you.
Mr. Boles?
Thank you. Just had a quick question. Thank you again to Jessica for getting, getting back to me on all my questions. Just wanted to bring this up again with the delays with the FCC and the Wi-Fi outdoor routers. Any new updates on that? I know this has been kind of out of our control, but just wanted to put it at the top of the list again, see what we could do. We had her stay up here a minute ago. I was gonna ask him about it.
I have nothing. I was hoping that we'd have something by now because it's almost the start of the pool season. So.
Right.
And I've heard nothing.
Mr. Boles or Mr. Lowry? Just to give you a little bit of an update, fiber optic connection from Dan Street up to the Joint Dispatch Center, that bid was out to bid. And what we did as a city is we added strategic location for pool boxes that will be part of our fiber connection network. And we, there will be an ordinance coming to council to reappropriate money for that purpose of part of our system. But what comes with that, through CDBG grant that you'll also get legislation for that, they're willing to pay for and install all fiber optic throughout the industrial park, Osceola, that whole quadrant down in there as part of this route. So there'll be more stuff coming to you in the very near future. It's a pretty large grant that we are going to be eligible for. But we still have to do some reappropriation for our portion, which will be roughly $100,000. That fiber is going to go Thomas Road, West Avenue, Nottingham, Overdale, Kent Drive, Howe Road to the Joint Dispatch Center. And so you see, hearing all that route, you know that there's strategic locations that we could put another pool box that will be dedicated to the city of Talmage for our customers. But with that route, they're going right past Osceola, that whole quadrant down in there that we could then, they are going to run fiber for us, all the connections down there. It's just a matter of us doing the fiber connections.
Yeah, very good. That's great.
That would, that would greatly increase the value of that vacant land down there. That 30 acres?
On.
Well, down, down below the park.
Yeah, yes.
Is that Fairlon gig that's getting pulled in or what?
Yes. Through the county's actually doing this.
Right.
For the Joint Dispatch Center.
But through like what, what entity? Is it Fairlon gig or is it? Okay.
Let me go through every, so we'll get Mr. Seizeck, then we'll go to Mrs. Gutman.
Question, last night it seemed very innocent up at the, the old Weaver School next to the JED or next to the Joint Dispatch Center. There were about 75 kind of hot rod cars having a little bit of a car showcase. I didn't know if we were trying to secure, secure that and prevent any type of future liability or issues with that building while it's still up.
Nobody has a permit to do that, so we'll follow up on that.
I'm aware of that, but I don't know if we want to put maybe just some road closed barricades up so there's just no access. I'd hate to see any vandalism or somebody trip and fall and get hurt and then come back on the city since we currently own that. Thank you.
Barricade the road off.
Mrs. Gutman?
Thank you. Mr. Rohr, regarding the camp counselor hourly rate, it looked like that was 1080 an hour. Is that right?
Correct.
Have we compared that to what other area day camps are offering their counselors?
I believe Ms. Simons has, but off the top of my head, I don't know what she came back with. I don't recall that.
Okay. It, it seems on the low side for what teenagers are getting paid these days, that various things they can do and, you know, what's required of them to be responsible for children. But I was thinking that the day camp is such a valuable service that we offer the community parents. I know when my daughter was little, it was a lifesaver because it's so affordable. And that if we could expand that through hiring more counselors, offering a few more dollars an hour, I don't know. It's, it's a really valuable service. And I know they do pay, so I don't know if that could be offset by somehow with the budget. It would be worth looking at.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna cycle back through. Mrs. Kilway?
Yeah, just real quick, coming back to the fiber that's going in over at the industrial park at Osceola, Commerce, Thomas and all that area. So if that's, that is gonna be done through the county, will those businesses be able to jump in and get Fairlon gig as their fiber instead of their current internet provider?
We're working on the details, but the answer, the quick answer is yes.
Okay.
But will it be called Fairlon gig or will it be called Talmage gig?
Okay.
That's some stuff that we are working on. And there'll be legislation and there's a lot to figure this out.
I remember when we started talking about that, what, four, five years ago?
There could be customers of Fairlon gig.
Right. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Boles, you have anything else?
I had one call out and one question. I was just going to say that vet memberships are up to 13. It doesn't sound like a lot, but since we instituted the discounts, it's double from last year. So that was a good call out I wanted to make. And then regarding the cemetery spaces, and unfortunately I've had a chance to spend time in cemetery in March, you noticed there, when you called out the spaces, can you just clarify, how many spaces are remaining, you know, for couples like together, like side by side? Is that down to none? Or like when you look at that total number of spaces, it's okay if you don't know off the top of your head, but?
I think it's zero.
Okay. So I just wanted to bring that up for everyone's awareness of.
I think I reported a couple of meetings back.
Yeah.
We sold our last side by side spaces.
Okay.
Those are, I think, singles.
Okay. I just wanted everyone to be aware of that. And I apologize if I missed that in the meeting. I just, having been there and, you know, observing all of that, it's getting pretty tight over there. And just something I wanted everyone to be aware of.
Thank you. Mr. Boles?
I just had one question for the mayor about the fiber. So I believe you said this is gonna be on the north side of West Avenue? Or it'll be on the south side of West Avenue?
I'm not sure.
Not sure yet, okay. So I guess my, my thought was the, where the Rocky Skating Center used to be.
Correct.
Big open area right now. I don't know what's going in there. I'm not sure if you're aware yet, but there's a lot of potential there for that piece of property. And as Mr. Lowry pointed out, could increase value or the attractiveness of that area. So I just want to make sure that if we're gonna do this project, if the city needs to, you know, chip in more to get additional fiber runs, whatever is required to kind of build that out, I think, I think the city should.
They're in the mix with what I talked about.
Okay.
That whole vacant land.
All right. Thank you.
Good, thank you. You good, Mr. Seizeck? All right.
Thank you.
Good report. Good, good. Good, good dialogue, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to Mrs. Gilbright, Director of Finance.
Good evening, thank you. I've submitted my written reports. We are a quarter away through the year already, hard to believe. Our income tax has been a little up and down in different areas, but still running within budget. And with that, just a reminder to everybody that income tax returns are due Tuesday, April 18th this year. And we've been, had an uptick in some residents coming in for help, so we are glad to help anybody who needs assistance filing their local tax return only, sorry. No federal or state help. But other than that, I'll be glad to answer any questions people may have about the financial reports.
Anything for Mrs. Gilbright? Thank you for everything you do and prepare for us. Director of Law, Mrs. Raiber?
Thank you. I just want to take the opportunity to publicize our next drug takeback. We participate in the drug takebacks with the Talmage Police Department, and they're doing the next one on April 22nd from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. In case you have not participated before, you are welcome to bring any prescription or unused over-the-counter medication to the drug takeback. When we do those days, you don't even have to get out of the car. They have the back parking lot for the PD set up so that you can just stay in your car. It's very convenient for people. You may want to black out your name and identifying information on the labels, or peel those labels off yourself. But if you do not do that, we will do that for you before we dispose of the bottles after we separate them from the medication. So, we encourage people to do that and get rid of those things from their medicine cabinets in a safe manner. And we have also a dump box, so if you can't make it on that day, you can come by at any time to the lobby of the police department to drop off those items.
Thank you, anything for Mr. Raiber? Thank you, Mrs. Kilway, we're, we're going to Agenda Item 10 now. Do you want to reopen your committee, or are you good to pass?
We can reopen and see if there's anything else.
Let's go to Planning and Zoning, Mrs. Kilway.
Thanks, I will reopen Planning and Zoning Committee. Everyone is in attendance, and we do not have any additional legislation. Is there anything from council? Anything from the administration?
Just like to recognize Helene Hussing down in the zoning department, who's put a lot of that, all the documents together. She's doing a phenomenal job down there.
Yes, she, she really is, yes. Thanks for shouting out to her.
So is Kelly.
Yes. Okay, anything else?
Okay, closed committee, thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to Finance, Mr. Seacack.
Thank you, good evening. We currently have Ordinance 2023-39 at second reading, and it's authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids, and the mayor to enter into contract for the replacement of the culvert in deteriorating storm sewer on Elton Drive and providing for immediate enactment. So, anyone, any comments on this, Mr. Rohr?
It can go three. Thank you.
Good. All right, we'll leave that at second reading then. Moving on, we have Ordinance 2023-41, and it's authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids, and the mayor to enter into contract for demolition of 89 East Howe Road, appropriating necessary sums and providing for immediate enactment. Same?
It can also go three.
First readings of ordinances and resolutions. We have Ordinance 2023-43 authorizing the mayor to enter into contract for the purchase of integrated security software licenses and related equipment from Johnson Control, Inc. through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program and providing for immediate enactment.
I apologize to, but I'm gonna have to ask for this at first reading. We had actually adopted a previous ordinance to authorize this purchase. However, it was incorrectly identified on that ordinance that this was through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services State Purchasing Program. When we went to approve it at Board of Control, we identified that this was actually through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. So, we're reintroducing a previously approved ordinance with the appropriate purchasing authority in it. And because we had had that adopted in March, we need to get the, the contract signed with the vendor to move forward if everybody would be agreeable to that.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
So, a motion is second to adopt Ordinance 2023-43 at first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Seacack?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, so I know, I remember when we did adopt the previous ordinance, do you happen to know what the previous ordinance number is? And how does that ordinance, does that then just become obsolete and we don't use it anymore? Do we have to repeal it, or how does, it just doesn't go into effect?
Just can't use it.
Okay.
It just wouldn't be accurate, so it just becomes obsolete.
Okay, that's fine, that's all I needed to verify on that. Thank you.
And, and these items, I believe, based on the last one, were in the budget for this year. And they are for the rec center controls?
This is for the door access controls.
Oh, door access panels, okay.
Yes, for all the door access controls.
Okay. Thanks for refreshing your memory. Any further discussion or questions on this? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Dennis Lowry?
Yes.
Craig Seacack?
Yes.
Jonathan Bowles?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Carol Kilway?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-43 is passed by vote of six to zero. Ordinance 2023-45 is authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids, and the mayor to enter into contract for the Lions Park Shelter Project and providing for immediate enactment.
It can go three readings as well.
We also have Ordinance 2023-46, Exhibit A, authorizing the mayor to enter into memorandum of understanding between the County of Summit and the City of Talmage for Summit County Special Operations Response Team SORT vehicles and providing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, this is a vehicle that will be stored out at Station 2 in one of the open bays out there. This is a unit that is available to the City of Talmage in the need that we need that vehicle, but it's also for all, anybody from Summit County wishing to need a response from that special unit that they would send a driver or someone in there to pick it up 24/7 to take it to whatever that emergency scene is. That vehicle was, used to be stored down in Green, and now it's coming up closer. And I know Chief Passerelli was a advocate of getting that request to move it into our area. So, I'll answer any questions that you have. I know Mr. Bozick probably has a question.
I have one question relating to that. So, we're housing that vehicle within the fire station?
Correct.
So, I guess who's liable for that piece of equipment?
That's what's outlined in the memorandum of understanding. We have mutual insurance, it's actually owned by Summit County, but we all, we have, both parties will be an additional insured on insurance policies for it, but they have the primary.
Okay.
But that's all outlined in there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or discussion on this?
I, I guess, can we get a copy of that memorandum then? Here's that.
If you go on the, the ordinance and click on it, all the way down?
Ah, okay, I see it now, it's, it's further down, got it, thank you.
All the details were attached.
Okay. Moving on, Ordinance 2023-47, Exhibit A, expressing intent to sell unneeded obsolete or unfit vehicles and providing for immediate enactment. Mr. Rohr?
That could go three readings.
You've already identified these?
I think this is a fire one only.
If you click on the link that is on there for the ordinance, you can also see, and I just did that and scrolled down to it, it's truck three, an F-250, no longer needed. It'll be taken out of service. It already is out of service, actually.
Can I get a motion for adoption?
Mrs. Seacack?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to adopt Ordinance 2023-47.
Second?
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Craig Seacack?
Yes.
Jonathan Bowles?
Yes.
Adam Bozick?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Carol Kilway?
Yes.
Dennis Lowry?
Yes.
All right, Ordinance 2023-47, Exhibit A, has been passed by vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anything else to come before the Finance Committee this evening? Hearing none, I will go ahead and close committee, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seacack. Let's move to Personnel, Mr. Bowles?
Yes, thank you. Call Personnel Committee to Order this evening. We are all present. There is no legislation on the agenda for Personnel. I'll open it up for questions or comments from the administration or council for Personnel. I just had a general inquiry on the Police Department advertising for officers. If there was any update on number of applicants, or where we were with civil service and anything to do with that. I've been, I saw a couple ads out there.
I know the applications are coming in, and I did not get an update from Civil Service, I apologize. I'll send you that tomorrow. I'll call Civil Service and see how many applications actually came in, but?
There were 15 on Tuesday, that's the last.
15 on Tuesday, per Chief Williams.
All right, great, thank you. All right, any other questions for Personnel?
Thank you.
All right, closed committee, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles, Community Issues, Mrs. Gutman?
Thank you, Mr. Lowry. I will open Community Issues. And tonight we have before us Ordinance 2023-48, amending Section 5 of Ordinance 96-1974, repealing Ordinance 36-2004, and providing for immediate enactment. And so, this deals with the Richardson Trust Fund. I understand it's, well, maybe, Mrs. Raiber, it'd be better for you to describe what made this necessary.
We'll fight over, are you gonna talk about it?
So, we, council decided to fund $5,000 to the Richardson Trust Fund this year. And as part of that process, we're looking at, because it's more money than we've ever done improving some of our processes, tightening up some controls in place. And as part of that, we met with the committee that is responsible for reviewing the applications. And they had an interest in increasing that to $500. That obviously, as you can see, has been $200 since 2004. It doesn't go quite as far for anybody with, in that limit. So, they wanted to request to council that you would consider increasing their limits to $500 per applicant moving forward.
Thank you. And that seems reasonable. Do we want to keep this at first reading, or did you need this passed?
It does not need to be passed if you want to give it a first reading and have further discussion on it, or think about it, that is not a problem.
Any input?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Seacack.
I have a question for Ms. Gilbright. Is it $500 per applicant per year, or $500 per application?
Per applicant per, per year. So, and it would be a family unit. So, like, you couldn't have the wife come in for one application and the husband, so yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Bowles?
Yes, thank you. Quick clarification, the, the amendment and the, so, the repealing of the Ordinance 36-2004, which, what was that that's being repealed?
That was, I believe, the 200?
That's the 200.
$200. That's the one that established the $200.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So, it is confusing, and it has a long history. Like, I had to go back through all the, all the old ones from 1974 forward. So, what they were, what they, the bulk of that ordinance basically establishes the Richardson Trust application process in general. But that section is the section that talks about the actual dollar value and the amount and the calendar year and everything. So, that, the majority of that hasn't changed since 1974. And it, and the rest of that is just, each time that it's been amended, it's really only been that section that's been amended. So, we're just repealing the last one and replacing it with this. And I'd be happy, if you're interested, I can send a copy of all the previous ones if you'd like. Would you like that? Okay.
Okay.
I'll email that.
We'll keep this at first reading then.
It's the 1974 and the 2006 one, how about that? There's a lot.
Okay, then. We also have before us Resolution 2023-5, a resolution declaring the month of May 2023 is Mental Health Awareness Month in Summit County, and encouraging the residents of Summit County to join in this acknowledgement for the executive and declaring an emergency. And I think as I did for Summit DD, I'd like to read this one. If you'll just be patient with me. Whereas people across the United States experience mental health conditions that impact their individual health and well-being, as well as their relationship with the community. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic affected interpersonal relationships by limiting access to schools, offices, stores, stadiums, theaters, and museums, and limited access to mental health services through a lack of in-person services, and increasing or intensifying mental illness and distress, thereby deteriorating the well-being of people across the country, including in Summit County. And whereas the silver lining of the pandemic is a heightened awareness and understanding of mental health, mental illness or distress, and mental well-being, and its connection to physical and overall health. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month, observed since 1949, has served as a vehicle for awareness, education, and advocacy around mental health, and provides an opportunity for residents to highlight the difficulties of the past few years. And whereas Summit County is committed to improving the mental health of residents by leading and collaborating on initiatives and programs that provide education, events, and services involving mental health. And whereas Change Direction is a campaign by the Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Services Board that aims to change the culture around mental health in Summit County and improve the emotional well-being of residents, and provides an opportunity for community members and organizations to get involved in fostering mental wellness. And whereas other programs like mental health first aid training offered by organizations such as Love Akron provide other opportunities for residents to learn and raise awareness about mental health. And whereas Summit County is currently participating in Upward Mobility, an urban institute project focused on combating poverty. And one of this project's priorities is to increase the mental wellness of Summit County by leveraging stakeholders like the ADM Board and NAMI to improve the livelihood of residents. And whereas Summit County residents experiencing a mental health crisis should always seek emergency help at 911 or 1-800-273-8255. And whereas supporting and educating the community on mental health and wellness is crucial to preventing crises and fostering a healthy, thriving county. And whereas this council finds and determines, after reviewing all pertinent information, that it is necessary and in the best interest of the County of Summit that May 2023 be declared Mental Health Awareness Month in Summit County, and encouraging the residents of Summit County to join us in this acknowledgement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Talmage, Counties of Summit, and Portage, State of Ohio, that the month of May 2023 is hereby declared Mental Health Awareness Month in Summit County, and the residents of Summit County are encouraged to join in this acknowledgement. And this resolution is hereby declared an emergency in the interest of health, safety, and welfare of the residents and employees of the County of Summit for the further purpose of immediately declaring May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Summit County to encourage prompt and widespread dialogue about mental health during the month of May. And so, this is a difficult topic to talk about publicly. So, I think I wanted to read that all just to bring it to the forefront. And also add the Mental Health Crisis Hotline number, the new one of 988, that you can call, text, or chat and reach a trained crisis counselor. So, if I could have a motion? So if I could have a motion.
Mrs. Gutman?
Yes, Mrs. Kilway?
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-5 at first reading.
Thank you. And.
Second.
And we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or commentary? Thank you. Seeing no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Carol Kilway?
Yes.
Dennis Lowry?
Yes.
Craig Cissick?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2023-5 is passed with a vote of six to zero. Okay. And we have nothing further. Mrs. Kilway?
Yes, I just had something real quick under Community Issues. Councilwoman Christine Weedy, hi, I'm the Summit County Council District Six, our District Six Representative and myself. We are cosponsoring a building and age-friendly community program that's going to be on Tuesday, May the 9th, at the Danbury here in Talmage. It's going to be put on by Direction Home of Akron Canton, and in conjunction with Eileen Zepio's County Executive Office. And it is basically just how to age friendly in your community, how to age in your home. And I would just invite everybody to come. It's for everybody, whether you're, you know, up in age, if you have somebody that is aging right now and you need better resources on how to keep them in their home or, or what to do. It's going to be a great program, and I would just invite everybody to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kilway. Anything else for the committee?
Oh, yes, I do.
Oh.
Sorry, forgot I have one more thing. I did receive an email from Barbara Fernandez about autism awareness in Talmage. And she has a program, and it is called Smarty Symbols. And what it basically is, is that there's a lot of people, children with disabilities that are nonverbal, especially people with autism. And it is just basically a like picture board that helps them communicate when they're at a playground. And so she had reached out to me and asked if, you know, the city would work with her. What they do is they, they supply the communication boards, and the city just has to put them in, in their parks. And before the meeting, I had shared this with Mike Rohr, and I was just wondering if, you know, we can take a look at it and see if this is something that we can add to our parks to help with inclusion for those with disabilities.
Absolutely. Love to take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, I sent you the email as well, so.
Yeah, that sounds fantastic. Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Just an update. The Talmadge Little League parade is April 30th, starting on, I think, 4:30. I pray that most, we'll start at Our Lady of Victory, go down around the circle, back down to McRae's. I know we have another council meeting before that, but keep that on your radar. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Okay. If there's nothing else, then I will close committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Gutman. Nice job this evening. Let's go to Safety. Mr. Bozak.
Thank you. I will open the Safety Committee. We currently have no ordinances in front of us, but we do have one resolution. Resolution 2023-6, recognizing Captain Douglas Bohan, retired, and Officer David Koklea. Hopefully I pronounced Chokola. I knew I was going to mess that up. From the Talmadge Police Department, Assistant Summit County Prosecutor Brian. Here comes another one. La Pransy. Assistant Summit County Prosecutor Jonathan Bamo. Can we get some pronunciation? Some, some.
I'm glad this is in your committee.
Yeah, this is, this is great. And Assistant Summit County Prosecutor Jack Winat Gorgon. Thank you, everyone, on council. This is a group effort. And providing for immediate enactment. So the resolution's quite lengthy. I really, I don't know, do we need to read the entire thing? I'll, I'll read a snippet, because I do want to definitely recognize these men and women from the Police Department and the effort that they put in to reopen this case and all the investigation work, just everything behind it. They did such a great job. So I'll start by just kind of reading a part of it. Multiple officers and detectives from the Talmadge Police Department and the Portage County Sheriff Department investigated the cases over the years and collected valuable evidence. And Captain Douglas Bohan, retired, spearheaded the reopening of the Karen Benz and Loretta Davis cold case murders over the last several years. They combed through decades of evidence, identified the murderer, and prepared a thorough and complete investigation. They assisted with this investigation, collected valuable information. The materials were provided to the, or by the Ohio Attorney General of Bureau Criminal Investigation regarding DNA testing, and they were able to basically have enough evidence to be able to charge. And this gentleman was convicted of those murders. So great job to the Talmadge Police Department, everybody that was involved, you know, our Law Department to, you know, the clerks within the Police Department. So great job on being able to put the workforce behind it and to be able to bring this case and reopen it. So great job, Chief.
Thank you.
So with that, do I have any other comments from Council or Administration?
Mr. Bozak?
Yes, ma'am.
If I can just add, I did draft the, draft the resolution, and I, you know, mean, mean every bit of it that's in there, and I'm just so proud of the work that the Talmadge Police Department did, especially retired Captain Bohan and Officer Chokola, who assisted him during the more recent years in reopening this. But I, I had an opportunity. I went to court as, as I was able to observe the trial proceedings, and it was just, it was a complicated, it was a complicated case, and to say that is an understatement. The amount of information that had to be gone through and collected and put together, and the years and decades that had passed, and the various past acts that were also involved in this case, and the other survivors that came forward and were able to testify, other officers that were involved from back in the 1970s that came and testified. And then, of course, you know, Captain Bohan and the Summit County Prosecutor's Office and their team did an excellent job as well. So it just, it was awesome to see justice work the way it's meant to. Thanks.
Thank you. And that's a great point that you made, and I failed to mention was, this was decades of work. And obviously, the guys that last touched it will get the most recognition for sure, but absolutely the officers through all of those decades had some involvement and some course of action to help bring this case. So thank you, everyone. Anyone else on Council, Administration? No. All right, move, move to, do I get a motion?
Motion approved.
So moved.
We have a first and a second by Mr. Lowry. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Carol Kilway?
Yes.
Dennis Lowry?
Yes.
Craig Cissick?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes unanimously by a vote of six to zero. And anything else to bring forward for the Safety Committee? Mr. Bolus?
Yes, I just had one. I recently saw an article about the departure of AMR Services from Akron, and I was just curious regarding what that means, you know, for, for our firefighters and paramedic in Talmage, you know, with the building of, the upcoming construction of St. Ed's with the current run volume. You know, are we looking at that? I know we're consistently looking at staffing. I just wanted to bring it up tonight, because I was, I was absent last meeting, and I didn't know if it was discussed or it's top of mind, because I think that it could become an issue, if not already fairly quickly.
AMR has not done emergency transport in Talmage for a long time, 10 years.
Okay, I think I was.
They strictly, they used to.
Okay.
They used to go into all the facilities, but they backed out of that a long time ago. That's why our calls for service have increased over the years. But it's been, AMR has been, all ambulances do not do emergency transports into the nursing home facilities.
Okay, I, I think my question was more to reverse that scenario, where we're called to pick up the slack where they have already, where they're currently servicing, are we?
No, we will not do the transport, like, from the hospital back to the nursing home.
Right.
We will only do emergency transports from Talmage out to the homes.
Okay.
Or out to the hospitals.
Okay. Again, I just wanted, I just saw that, and I wanted, it just sparked my attention.
Maybe Chief Passerelli and myself in retirement will start an ambulance service.
Thank you.
And Patty shaking her head, no.
I mean, that's how the, a lot of ambulance services started, out of funeral homes.
I used to work for them.
Yeah, done quickly and all those. What was I going to say? We may see more mutual aid calls, though, I think, potentially in Akron, on Britton Road. We'll see.
Well, I don't, again, AMR did not do emergency transports for, they, Akron still responded to the calls. We do go up, we do mutual aid now with the City of Akron.
Yeah, but if they're tied up doing, you know, basic transports, it may involve us a little bit more.
Good, yeah, absolutely.
And that, that's a good point. That's what I was going to mention as well, is if they are doing those medial transports back and forth, they may be tied up doing that and not able to respond to something closer to our end.
They won't be back and forth. Those would be two. They'll find a taxi service to drive somebody home, honestly.
Probably. So I guess with that, have we had any kind of just conversation with City of Akron, just to make sure, you know?
I have not.
Everybody's all on the same page, that we're not missing something?
I know the Chiefs Association are constantly talking about it. And I'll talk to Chief Underwood tomorrow, Monday. He's off tomorrow, I think.
Thank you.
Great, great comment. Thanks for bringing it up, sir.
Mr. Bozak?
Yes, sir.
I just have one thing, and, and many of you that are campaigning anyway right now, I'm sure, may have been hearing comments, and I know it's, it's the most common comment that I've heard when I'm talking to somebody on, on a cut-through street. And, and the chief's aware of it, we're all aware of it, and, and these residents want people to slow down. You know, if you're on Kent Drive in Allendale, if you're on Wilson or Barnes or Atwood or Washburn, it's not, they drive like they're still on Northeast Avenue or Northwest Avenue. And so they really want us to slow, slow people down, especially if it's a neighborhood that we know, it's a, you know, Kent Drive with the park there, some young families, those kids are on their bikes, you know, without sidewalks. So anyway, it's nothing new, but when you actually get out, like we all are now, you just hear it, and it's redundant. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, without hearing anything else, I will close the Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Bozak. Okay. We, we voted, then we went on a rabbit hole or something. So.
Thank you.
Let's move to Public Service. Mrs. Gutman, your committee tonight.
Thank you. I will call Public Service to order, and we have before us at first reading, ordinance 2023-44, authorizing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids, and the mayor to enter into a contract for sealing parking lots and providing for immediate enactment. Mr. Rohr, you?
Yes, so we're going to try to seal up as many parking lots that we have within the city, Town Hall here, and then Police Department, and a couple of the parks, and some of the rec center. And that's what this is. I mean, it can go three readings. It's up to you folks.
Mr. Bozak?
I just have a question. When you say sealing, are we doing an actual sealing, or are we going to use my favorite?
I'm not smiling that big. If we were doing what I wanted to do, I'd be really excited about it.
We're not chip sealing.
Yeah, well, let's not chip seal. If we can do that, that would be great.
And we're just sealing.
That's great. Fantastic to hear that. Thank you.
There's no fun.
Okay. Is there any reason?
It's a budgeted item, correct?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think there's any harm in adopting.
I'd move to adopt.
Second.
And a second? Okay, well, we have a, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, then Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Carol Kilway?
Yes.
Dennis Lowry?
Yes.
Craig Cissick?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Or, and it's 2023-44 has passed six to zero. And is there anything else before Public Service tonight? Hey, hearing nothing, I'll close committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Gutman. Item 11 reports to special committees, council. I, I have nothing other than I just wanted to thank Mrs. Gilbride for her work with both Mrs. Conti, Mrs. Burton, and the Richardson Trust Committee to, to, to make that process. It'll be much, it'll be better. It'll be much better. So thank you, Mrs. Gilbride. Anything else from you, Mr. Bolus? Okay. Item 12, announcements. There was an article in the Beacon Journal, I believe, on Sunday or Monday, about, I think they called it Metro Reimagined. And, and what it, what the article was about was an expansion and change in routes for Metro RTA. And in the article, it said that they would begin having service to Brimfield. So I'm thinking, if they're going to go to Brimfield, they're going to go down East Avenue. But I've, I have three different messages into them this week and have not got a reply yet. So if, if anyone ever calls me back, I'll give you an update on if Talmage will be affected in any way by the increased service to Brimfield with Metro. That's the only announcement I have. Anybody have anything else?
I have also heard that. I talked to one of the bus drivers at a career fair, and he had said the same thing. They're going to start doing transportation out to Brimfield, so.
I just, I just don't know the route that they're going to take to get there.
I do not do that, yeah.
So anyway, you call, you ask a question, you have to wait on the reply. So is there anything else to come before council this evening? We have control tonight?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Room call.
Mary Gutman?
Yes.
Carol Kilway?
Yes.
Dennis Lowry?
Yes.
Craig Cissick?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus?
Yes.
Adam Bozak?
Yes.
Good job this evening. It is 8:30. We are adjourned.